June 25th to order. I'd like to start off with land recognition. I'd like to take this opportunity to acknowledge the traditional territories of the Blackfoot Nation and the people of Treaty VII Region in Southern Alberta. The city of Chestermere is also home to the Maiti Nation of Alberta Region 3. To start off this meeting this morning, I would like to thank Callum and all his team for the excellent work on the by-election. These people were here to --[1434.32][1434.32][applause] But residents may not appreciate or understand, these people were here until 5:00 this morning, getting everything put together, and yet they show up here this morning for this council meeting. Thank you, Callum. Much appreciated.
Thank you.[1453.84][1453.84][applause]
I'd also like to recognize the elected candidates that are in the room, and I'll start off with Shannon Dean, Mayor-elect. Congratulations, Shannon.[1466.64][1466.64][applause] And I'm also going to go through the councillors, please, and I'm not going to embarrass myself by trying to pronounce all the last names. Grant Murray, congratulations.[1479.60][1479.60][applause] Janelle Sandel.[1485.04][1485.04][applause] Robert Schindler.[1490.72][1490.72][applause] Ann Robb.[1500.24][1500.24][applause] Congratulations, everyone. You've got a big job ahead of you. There's lots of work to do, but I can tell you, there's an unbelievable team behind this community here. And it's very gratifying to hear the laughter and chat as I come into this building early this morning. We're moving forward. The time has come for change, and it'll happen now. And I can assure you that Pat and his team have done an outstanding job in dealing with a lot of the recommendations that are in both the CUF report and the Deloitte Financial Inspection Report. It will help the transition for the new council, and we will get started next week, and you'll get sworn in next week. So, welcome aboard. The city is blessed to have you donate your time. I'll tell you, you're not going to make much money at doing it.[1551.76][1551.76][laughter] With that, Mr. Vincent, is there any changes to the agenda?
First, Mr. Official Administrator under "Updates," which is the first part of this agenda item. I too would like to commend my staff, the manager of Ledge Services, Callum Morrison, Vanessa, Emily, Josh, and our returning officer and substitute returning officer for outstanding, remarkable job. Certainly appreciate it. Just wanted to notify the council and mayor-elect that the declaration of the election results as per Section 97.2 of the Local Authorities' Election Act occurs at noon on the fourth day after Election Day. So, the results will not become official until noon on Friday, after which time we'll drop the council-elect and mayor-elect title to councillor and mayor. I thank you very much. The second thing is, despite the Oilers' loss last evening,[1622.16][1622.16][applause] the sun still rose this morning, and I am still a very happy person. Unfortunately for the staff, my promise of two days off if the Oilers want the cup is now canceled.[1636.72][1636.72][laughter] Approval of the agenda, Mr. Official Administrator? We have nothing to add to the agenda or nothing to remove.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. And just prior to moving the motion forward, my apologies, I wanted to recognize councillor Ritesh Naran for being with us today. Thank you.[1656.80][1656.80][applause] With that, I'll move that the official administrator approve the June 25th, 2024 regular council meeting agenda as presented. So moved. All in favor? Carried. Moving on to the minutes. Move that the official administrator approve the June 11th, 2024 regular council meeting minutes as presented. So moved. All in favor? Carried. Public hearing, cake please, 4.1.
Mr. Official Administrator, are you going to declare the public hearing open?
Yes.
Thank you.
Move that the official administrator open the public hearing for bylaw 022-24, proposed road closure at 9:10 a.m. So moved. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Official Administrator. My name is Catherine Dougherty. I'm the manager of infrastructure here at the city of Chestermere. I am bringing forward to council this morning a motion that council give second reading to the road closure bylaw 022-24, a motion that council give third reading to road closure bylaw 022-24, and a motion that council direct administration to prepare the appropriate survey plans as required for closing the portion of road as shown on Schedule A. On March 12th, 2024, bylaw 006-24 was adopted with the direction to have the appropriate survey plans prepared for the closure of a portion of road shown on Schedule A. In discussion with Alberta land titles, the city was informed that the previously adopted bylaw was missing a reference to the survey plan that will eventually be registered to reflect the portion of road closure. In addition to this, approximately 0.3 acres of road that was originally proposed to be closed will remain as road. The official administrator passed first reading of bylaw 022-24 on June 11th, 2024, and approved administration for scheduling the public hearing on June 25th, 2024, which is today. Per the city's digital advertising policy and in accordance with the municipal government act, notice of the public hearing was posted online for two consecutive weeks on the city's public notice webpage. As of 12:00 p.m. on June 17th, one written submission had been received from members of the public and was in support. Implications for this road closure? There is no change since bylaw 006-24 And lastly, motion that the official administrator remove Catherine Carnes from subdivision and development appeal board effective immediately. Nothing personal. (laughter) As of June 6th, 2024, Victor Puto and Vanessa Vandermeer, senior legislative clerk, have completed all necessary requirements and training to be appointed to the subdivision and developments appeal board. With the appointments of Victor Puto and Vanessa Vandermeer as clerk, the SDAB will meet quorum following the resignation of Catherine Carnes, who's resigned due to taking employment with the city. So yes, just to repeat the motions, administration seeking to... Motion that the official administrator appoint Victor Puto to the subdivision and development appeal board effective immediately. Motion that the official administrator appoint Vanessa Vandermeer as clerk for the subdivision and development appeal board effective immediately. And motion that the official administrator remove Catherine Carnes from the subdivision and development appeal board effective immediately.
If I may, we would like to acknowledge that Kate did resign when she started in accordance with our procedural bylaws, so this is just the formality of having counsel removed. She has not been an employee and on the board at the same time because her resignation did come in when she started.
That is correct.
Thanks, Liz, for that clarification, and we have had one SDAB hearing since that time as well. Thank you. Thank you, Callum. Can we have the motion, please? Move that the official administrator appoint Victor Poto to the subdivision and development appeal board effective immediately. So moved, all in favor? Carried. Move that the official administrator appoint Vanessa Vandermeer as clerk for the subdivision and development appeal board effective immediately. So moved, all in favor? Carried. Move that the official administrator remove Catherine Carnes from the subdivision and development appeal board effective immediately. So moved, all in favor? Carried. Bylaw 6.1, I don't think we need to have another presentation on that. We can just proceed with the motions, if we could, please. Move that the official administrator give second reading to road closure bylaw 022-24. So moved, all in favor? Carried. Move that the official administrator direct administration to prepare the appropriate survey plans as required for closing the portion of road shown in Schedule A. So moved, all in favor? Carried. Liz, please, 7.1.
Good morning, Official Administrator. Today, I am bringing forward to council an appointment... appointments to the subdivision and development appeal board. We are looking for the following motions. Motion that the official administrator appoint Victor Poto to the subdivision and development appeal board effective immediately. The second motion is that... Motion that the official administrator appoint Vanessa Vandermeer as clerk for the subdivision and development appeal board effective immediately. And lastly, motion that the official administrator remove Catherine Carnes from subdivision and development appeal board effective immediately. Nothing personal. (laughter) As of June 6th, 2024, Victor Puto and Vanessa Vandermeer, senior legislative clerk, have completed all necessary requirements and training to be appointed to the subdivision and developments appeal board. With the appointments of Victor Puto and Vanessa Vandermeer as clerk, the SDAB will meet quorum following the resignation of Catherine Carnes, who's resigned due to taking employment with the city. So yes, just to repeat the motions, administration seeking to... Motion that the official administrator appoint Victor Puto to the subdivision and development appeal board effective immediately. Motion that the official administrator appoint Vanessa Vandermeer as clerk for the subdivision and development appeal board effective immediately. And motion that the official administrator remove Catherine Carnes from the subdivision and development appeal board effective immediately.
If I may, we would like to acknowledge that Kate did resign when she started in accordance with our procedural bylaws, so this is just the formality of having counsel removed. She has not been an employee and on the board at the same time because her resignation did come in when she started.
That is correct.
Thanks, Liz, for that clarification, and we have had one SDAB hearing since that time as well. Thank you. Thank you, Callum. Can we have the motion, please? Move that the official administrator appoint Victor Poto to the subdivision and development appeal board effective immediately. So moved, all in favor? Carried. Move that the official administrator appoint Vanessa Vandermeer as clerk for the subdivision and development appeal board effective immediately. So moved, all in favor? Carried. Move that the official administrator remove Catherine Carnes from the subdivision and development appeal board effective immediately. So moved, all in favor? Carried. Bylaw 6.1, I don't think we need to have another presentation on that. We can just proceed with the motions, if we could, please. Move that the official administrator give second reading to road closure bylaw 022-24. So moved, all in favor? Carried. Move that the official administrator give third and final reading to road closure bylaw number 022-24. So moved, all in favor? Carried. Move that the official administrator direct administration to prepare the appropriate survey plans as required for closing the portion of road shown in Schedule A. So moved, all in favor? Carried. Liz, please, 7.1.
Good morning. I am here today to give a brief update on the city's work to obtain and acquire a site for the high school. As we have brought forward in the past, city administration has been working with the impacted landowners, developers, and Rocky View schools to acquire sufficient lands for a 900-student high school site within the city of Chestermere. The city's municipal development plan and gateway area structure plan identify lands for future high school site and recreation site in the communities of Dawson, Landing, and Chelsea. The focus at this time and of this report is the acquisition of the future high school lands, not the recreation lands. Future efforts will be dedicated towards the recreation site as well. A 900-student high school site requires a total of 15.7 acres of land. The city and developers previously provided Rocky View schools with approximately 8.95 acres, resulting in the need to obtain an additional 6.75 acres. Since December 4th, 2023, city administration has completed a review of the previous agreement signed by former council and administration and has evaluated multiple options for securing the necessary 15.7 acres of land. To this end, the city has worked closely with developers and the landowners in the communities of Chelsea and Dawson. Working together, the team has reoriented the high school and recreation site per the attached map. And, oh, I just hit the wrong button, sorry. And we are working to facilitate an accelerated timeframe for transferring the acquired lands to Rocky View schools. We are very excited to advise the official administrator and the community that at this time, the city, the landowners, and Qualico communities have reached an agreement in principle for the revised layout. The partnership is working to complete the necessary agreements to facilitate the subdivision and transfer of lands, and the city has engaged a surveyor to advance the legal and survey... legal land survey and complete the subdivision in order to obtain title to the lands upon execution of the agreement. Administration will return to the newly-elected council with further information and the necessary agreements as it progresses. And we would like to acknowledge today that Ms. Sherry Pazook is... Sorry, Shali Pazook is here with us today with the Rocky View School Board. Any questions? We're happy to answer them.
I have no questions, Liz. Thank to you and your team for getting this put together. This is great news for the community and for the school district. Well done. Can we have the motion, please? Move that the official administrator accept the city of Chestermere high school update for information. So moved, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Muriel, please. Grant Adjudication Committee.
Good morning, Official Administrator. My name is Muriel Gavilan, and I'm the community grants coordinator. In accordance with directives received from council to administration earlier this year to open a second call for proposals to supplement the regular grant funding cycle from July to December 2024, $168,490 was allocated to the community grant funding stream. $64,950 was allocated to the FCSS funding stream. The grant adjudication committee met on June 19th to determine funding, and the recommendations are put forward in the attachment... attachment to this request for decision. Additionally, the remaining balance amount of $40,750 from FCSS not expended for 2024 will have to be requested to the province for rollover for the 2025 cycle after receiving council approval. The remaining balance amount of $39,798 for community grants not expended is being requested to be rolled over by council to the 2025 funding cycle. Some implications. Municipal and partner grant funding has historically supported numerous local not-for-profit and social initiatives in the city of Chestermere. Significant disruptions were made to the 2023 grant funding cycle, including delays and suspension. And also, the committee decisions were made prior to the election, and we'd like to just mention a few of the councillor elects were associated with a few organizations, and we... and were approved for this call. If council feels like this should be addressed further, we are happy to oblige. The request for decision today is that council motions to accept and ratify the grant adjudication committee recommendations and accept the rollover request for funding. Would you like me to present the recommendations in the attachment?
Maybe, if you would, please, Muriel.
Sure.
For the benefit of the public.
It's all... You don't have it. So for community grant funding, Chestermere Fine Art Guild for art workshops and evening art sessions, Chestermere Historical Foundation to reprint "Chestermere: A Home for All Seasons" book, Chestermere Minor Hockey Jersey Replacement Refresh, Chestermere Public Library, The Community Living Room Project, Chestermere Seniors All Services, Community Connections for South Asian seniors, Community 50... or sorry, Chestermere White Capers, Community 50+ Stampede Breakfast, Imagination Library of Chestermere, Rocky View Chestermere Agricultural Society for Country Fair and The Winter Thing and Kids Holiday Store, The Rotary Club of Chestermere for the Edible Forest Border Edging, Synergy for Program and Community Enhancement, and for FCSS funding, Synergy for Teen Shout and Youth Internship Program for Vitality Grants, Resident-Led Neighborhood Initiatives, receiving $500 each for Chestermere Community Cleanup, Chestermere Lakeside Quilters Charity Quilt, Take a Toy, Leave a Toy Beach Project, Kids Summer Splash Fun, and Kids Summer Bags. Thank you.
Thank you, Muriel, and thank you to you and your staff and the committee that works in this. I know it's not an easy job, and you put a lot of work into it. It's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move that the official administrator approve and ratify the grant adjudication committee recommendations for the second call for proposed community and FCSS granting funding cycle of July 2024 to December 2024. Excuse me. So moved, all in favor? Carried. Move that the official administrator move the request to rollover the remaining balance of community grants for the amount of $39,798 and FCSS grants for the amount of $40,750 into the 2020-25 funding cycle. So moved, all in favor? Carried. Mr. Vincent, please.
Thank you, Mr. Official Administrator. I'm pleased to present the second quarter report from the CAO office, which includes a number of departments. This report highlights a three-month summary on the activities of the department reporting to myself. I am incredibly proud of the work that we have done over the past six months, in particular the past three months, and as you read through the report, you'll recognize how many things have been accomplished during that particular period of time. I'm forever thankful and grateful to the dedicated staff here at the city for making all of this happen. I would be pleased to answer any questions or speak to any matters that you might have questioned, Mr. Official Administrator. With that, I recommend that the official administrator accept the Q2 2024 CAO office report as information.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. I don't have any questions. I just want to congratulate you and your team for the continued work that you've done. It's amazing how this organization has transitioned over the last six months. Kudos to all of you. I'll move that the official administrator accept the Q2 2024 CAO office report as information. So moved, all in favor? Carried. Sandy, please.
Good morning, Mr. Official Administrator. It's a beautiful day in Chestermere, and I'm here to present the Q2 2024 Corporate Services Report. Council recommendations, motion that the official administrator accept the Q2 2024 Corporate Services Report for the second quarter of 2024 as information. Subject background, on a quarterly basis, Corporate Services will provide a report detailing the financial results of the city of Chestermere. Corporate Services has had a busy second quarter as per the attached report. Again, recommended options, that the official administrator accept the Q2 2024 Corporate Services Report for the second quarter of 2024 as information. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. I don't have any questions. Mr. Vincent?
Mr. Official Administrator, just for the record, everyone should be looking forward to their mailbox. The tax notices were mailed out yesterday. We thought the timing was most appropriate, that council meeting was today, so you'll probably be receiving them later today or tomorrow.
Kind of tying that news into the defeat of the Oilers. (laughter) Move that the official administrator accept the Q2 2024 Financial Activities Report for the second quarter of 2024 as information. So moved, all in favor? Carried. Thank you, Sandy. Well done. Liz, please.
Community Growth and Infrastructure is also pleased to present a Q2 2024 report highlighting the successes and ongoing priorities of the department, including project management, data management, also known as our GIS team, procurement, engineering, utilities, planning, and development and building, and we've also included an update to the development statistics for what is occurring within the city right now. I am happy to answer any questions, should you have any, and recommend that you accept the report as information.
I have no questions. Thank you, Liz. Motion, please. Move that the official administrator accept the Q2 2024 Community Growth and Infrastructure Report as information. So moved, all in favor? Carried. Kent, please.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Official Administrator. Similar to my colleagues, I'm happy to present the second quarter report for community operations. The nine departments that encompass community operations have been busy, of course, throughout the second quarter, as we start to get into spring and open up the lake and our beaches and parks. Just want to say special thanks to especially the Parks Group for dealing with all of the candidate signs throughout the parks, taking them down, mowing around them, putting them back. Would also like to say a special thanks to the Parks Crew for their prompt removal of all the graffiti we saw yesterday through our city. That was an unfortunate incident, but congratulations to them for cleaning that up. And I would like to acknowledge a significant mistake that I myself have made. I should include on the list of eight departments there also our RCMP administration and clerical. They are employees of the city, and it is my deepest regrets to them that I forgot to include them in this report. So, a lot of information on pages 93 to 113 in the agenda, and I would appreciate if you would accept this report as information.
Thank you, Kent, and hopefully we'll see all those election signs gone later this week. Move that the official administrator accept the community operations second quarter 2024 report as information. So moved, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Mr. Vincent, please. Mr. Vincent, please.
Mr. Official Administrator, the Minister of Municipal Affairs appointed Deloitte Inc. to conduct an inspection of the City of Chestamere's financial policies, controls, and governance, as well as certain financial transactions for the period of October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, to December fourth of twenty twenty-three. Deloitte Inc. completed their municipal inspection report pursuant to Ministerial Order MSD zero zero five slash two four and filed their report with the Minister of Municipal Affairs on May third of twenty twenty-four. At the May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four Special Meeting of Council, the official administrator instructed administration to pursue all legal means to recover fin- funds that were expended without proper authority from all parties as detailed in the Deloitte Inc. City of Chestamere Municipal Inspection Report. Reynolds, Mirth, Richards, and Farmer filed the Statement of Claim on behalf of the City of Chestamere at the Court of King's Bench in Calgary, Alberta on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four for a judgment against the defendants jointly and severally for unauthorized expenditures of city funds, a copy of which is attached to this request for decision for information purposes. The matter now being before the court will proceed through the judicial process. The City of Chestamere may incur legal costs in its pursuit to recover municipal funds expended without proper authorization and approval and be successful in recovering only a portion of those particular funds. The previous council decisions are so noted, and the attachments include the City of Chestamere Statement of Claim File Number one-one-nine-three-nine-three dash zero-zero-eight SEW. Respectfully, Mr. Official Administrator, I submit for your consideration that a motion to approve accepting the Statement of Claim filed on behalf of the City of Chestamere on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four with the Court of King's Bench in Calgary, Alberta, seeking a judgment against the defendants jointly and severally for unauthorized expenditure of city funds, accept this report as information. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. I made a commitment in December fourth that we would do everything we could to recover funds for the cities that were expended without proper authorization. I thank you for the work that you and your team have done in moving this forward. With that, I'll move that the official administrator accept the Statement of Claim File Number one-one-nine-three-nine-three dash zero-zero-eight SEW filed on behalf of the City of Chestamere on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four with the Court of King's Bench in Calgary, Alberta, seeking a judgment against the defendants jointly and severally for the unauthorized expenditure of city funds as information. So moved, all in favor? With that, Mr. Vincent, I think we have a presentation from IFF.
Mr. Official Administrator, members of the public in the gallery today, this is the last item on the agenda. This is the official administrator, Mr. Doug Legore's last official meeting as the official administrator, and it's appropriate that we devote a little bit of time in this special presentation. Yeah? I would like to invite Lieutenant Yorston from the IAFF Local five-two-eight-four for a plaque presentation. Lieutenant, please.
Good morning, Mr. Official Administrator.
Good morning.
I'd like to say good morning to our council elect, our mayor-elect, our staff that are here today, and thank them for having the time for us to be able to make this presentation. My name's Kimberly Yorston, and I'm the lieutenant on a shift for the Chestamere Fire Service, but I'm also the president for the Chestamere Professional Firefighters Association, which is an IFF chapter for five-two-eight-four. We represent the firefighters in the city of Chestamere, and we're proud to stand here today to commemorate our signing of our first contract. Before we proceed further, I just want to recognize some of the members that have come in today and was asked to introduce them. We have newly off probation firefighter Logan Pratt, firefighter Jordan Lamperts, probationary firefighter Joel Ramsey. In the back, we have Captain Jake Gallinger, who is also the vice president of the local, Lieutenant Jeremy Vitale, training officer Matt Slimmons, firefighter Will Wood, and Lieutenant Brant Edlund. All of them are here today because we believe that this is an important day for us to be able to recognize the partnership that we've taken on in February and continue to move forward with, and we wanted to be here with a unified voice. We wanted to reflect on the journey that brought us here. The agreement we celebrate today is not just a legal document, but it represents a commitment to collaboration, its mutual respect in ensuring the safety and well-being of our community. The negotiations that led us to the contract were marked by diligence, professionalism, and a shared dedication to serving the people of Chestamere. When I reflect on how our relationship is going to be successful, one of the things that we look at is there has to be a shared common goal, and it is very easy for us to see a shared common goal here. We all have the goal of serving the residents and the visitors of the city of Chestamere in whatever capacity our jobs ask us to do so. I want to express my gratitude to the negotiating teams. We had many over the years. It was a three-and-a-half-year journey, and we saw many different people come through. But one of the things that was always marked by was the professionalism and the commitment to try to move things forward, and for that, we wanted to say thank you. The plaque itself, we've chosen and we've designed for a few reasons. This plaque represents both the city and the fire service or the local union. The coins that are mounted in it are actually a single coin that is a challenge coin that is provided to all of our members. That challenge coin has two sides, and on one side, we have the city logo, and on the other side, we have the IFF or the Chestamere Professional Firefighters Association logo. This is the only challenge coin I know in existence where both the city and the IFF share the coin. Everywhere else that I've seen, it is either a city coin or a union coin, and this is the only one that has done that, so we wanted to make sure that we display it on our plaque, both sides of that. You'll also probably recognize the pen that's there. That pen was this pen that we brought in and signed the contract with. I think that being able to capture a little bit of our history, as young as it is, going forward and ensuring that we have it was important. We've made two plaques as we had two pens, and we have an identical plaque that we are going to also display in the fire hall, and we would ask that you accept this plaque on behalf of the City of Chestamere from the IFF Local five-two-eight-four as a thank you for all of the work and all of the commitment that you've made towards us.
Thank you. It's unfortunate it took us. Well, just a second down. It's unfortunate it took us three and a half years to reach the agreement, but it's a journey, and we're at the end of it now, and we now have a good relationship and can move forward on that.
Absolutely.
And I just want to thank you for the dedication of the fire department on an everyday basis. You people keep our community safe, and we very much appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vincent?
Mr. Legore, if you might pass a resolution to accept this generosity, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Move that the official administrator accept the generosity of IFF Local five-two-eight-four, who at their initiative and expense have arranged for the presentation of a plaque with the pen used in the signing of a collective agreement between the City of Chestamere and IFF Local five-two-eight-four. So moved, all in favor? Carry.
Mr. Official Administrator, there's one more presentation to be made. Mr. Doug Legore was appointed as the official administrator on September twenty-second of twenty twenty-two by Ministerial Order MSD zero-eight-two slash two-two pursuant to section five-seventy-five of the Municipal Government Act to oversee and supervise the activities of council and administration. On December fourth, twenty twenty-three, Mr. Legore was appointed as the official administrator, having all the powers and duties of council pursuant to Ministerial Order MSD zero-seven-six slash two-three. Throughout the time he has served as official administrator, he has distinguished himself by his leadership and commitment to open and transparent governance, serving the best interests of the city of Chestamere and its residents. The residents of the city of Chestamere, represented by three spokespersons, wish to express and convey their heartfelt thanks and gratitude for the job Mr. Legore has done during his tenure as the official administrator. The administration for the city of Chestamere also wishes to take the opportunity to express their thanks and appreciation for his continuing support and belief in their commitment and willingness to serving the public to the very best of their ability as they strive to meet the gold standard of municipal organizational excellence. With the municipal by-election having now been conducted and a mayor and councillors elect waiting to take the oath of office, Mr. Legore will relinquish his position as official administrator, having all the powers and duties of council, at the organizational meeting of the new council scheduled for next Wednesday, July third, twenty twenty-four. With that, I would like to invite the three community members to come forward. First is Ms. Patty Spruill, if you would please. And also, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Official Administrator, Staff Sergeant Kathy Claussen is here in their ceremonial red surge in honor of you today.
Thank you for this opportunity. Mr. Vincent, I appreciate it. Doug, you have been our knight in shining armor and our guardian angel. You have protected our community as if it was your own. We have trusted in your firm but fair approach, felt your support, admired your presence, witnessed your deep knowledge and great skill, and even enjoyed a few long-awaited gotcha moments, which you delivered with great eloquence. As our community embarks on a well-deserved new beginning, we wish you the best in all it, all the best, sorry, in your new journey, whatever that may be. Doug, don't take this wrong, but we hope you never have to return to Chestamere in the same capacity you're leaving it, but please don't be a stranger. We will miss you very much.
Thank you, Patty, for your kind words.
Next, I would like to invite to the podium Joanne Limna.
I'm a little cheekier than Patty. So when I was asked to say a few words to mark your departure, I was both humbled and honored. So let me first start with thank you, Mr. Official Administrator. Thank you for being a steward to our city. Thank you for bringing reason and stability to our council. Thank you for holding people to account, and thank you for protecting our hard-working city staff. Your oversight and direction, this is the cheekiness, while not appreciated by a few, wink, wink, nudge, nudge, it was refreshing and welcomed by the majority of residents. I personally appreciate your transparency, openness, and honesty. You responded to questions quickly with as much detail as possible to ensure a complete and thorough understanding. I've had the pleasure, and it has been a pleasure, of sitting in almost every council meeting with you. I took my seat, you took yours. You were just paid for yours. As our new council takes their seats, I wish them well and encourage them to work collaboratively and cooperatively in the best interests of our community. You've shown them how process and procedure is important and imperative to their success. Thank you for all you have done to support the city of Chestamere when we needed it most. I will miss seeing you at council meetings, really. And as Patty said, I hope that you never have to return in an official capacity, but you are always welcome for a coffee. If you're passing through, please stop by and see us. Best wishes, Doug, and thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I'd like to invite to the podium somebody simply known as Mr. Chestamere, Alex Halat.
Although, Doug, I'm not as organized as Patty and Joanne. I didn't write a speech. On behalf of the citizens of Chestamere, thank you for everything you've done. You've brought a sense of morale and happiness back to our community that we lost over the last couple of years. You can tell by the room, I don't think our previous leader would have seen this many people come say bye to him. You know, you're an amazing, amazing person. The children in our community, I work with a lot of not-for-profits with children, and what you've done for us in the last eighteen months for the youth in our community is surreal. And on behalf of myself, the Chestamere Land and Ormonds Association, the Olympus Boxing Club Society, thank you for everything that you've done for us. Thank you.
Before we go to our last presentation, just for the record, many people may not know this or realize, Mr. Legore, during his term as the official administrator, was being paid by the minister, by Alberta Municipal Affairs. It did not cost one cent of taxpayers' money for the term that he has served in his capacity, so I want to acknowledge that. Finally, I ask city staff, represented by Ann Thai and Debbie McBride, to come forward to make a presentation on behalf of the city administration.
Doug, on behalf of the staff here at the City of Chestamere, I want to extend our deepest gratitude. Thank you for your perseverance and dedication to our small community over the past two years. Your unwavering support and commitment have made a significant impact in numerous ways. We appreciate how you have restored good governance to our organization and brought professionalism and order back to council meetings. There are countless reasons to thank you, but above all, we want to express our sincere appreciation for everything you have done for us. While we will miss you, we hope you will visit or return to visit us sometimes, hopefully only for good reasons, and we wish you all the best in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we have a little something for you from all the staff, and we are deeply thank you from all of our hearts, so can we?
Can you come forward and accept? Please.
So we don't know if anybody knows the history of this here. This was something that when they had a get-together at City Hall, a number of people came and wrote with chalk on the one side of the building, their appreciation, and I've just quotes, just to thank us for everything that you've done. So we thought this was very appropriate. Look at this. Lots of signatures and lots of little comments about how much we've been doing, how much you've done.
Thank you very much. It's very humbling, I assure you. From the time I started sitting in these council chambers, trying to think of the right word to describe it, it's not embarrassing, it was shameful how this community was treated. You would not see staff in this room eight months ago unless they had to be, and they were nervous when they were in the room. and they were nervous when they were in the room. And Joanne, you're right, there's a lot of people that would not agree with your comments here today. When I started interacting with staff, you could tell there was a passion and dedication for this community, something that some people did not see. And I especially remember Ann, because when I had to start reviewing the financial side of it and I requested information, I got it for her the first time and the first time only, because once I got it, I raised questions, and then they would not let her provide the information to me anymore. That bothered me. And then, just to compound how they treated people here, they locked the doors so I did not have access to a washroom even. That's minor, but it shows you how people were treated in this building. And Chestamere is an unbelievable community. They have unbelievable staff here that are so dedicated, and I just appreciate everything that everybody has done. And thank you. With that, I'd like a motion to adjourn the meeting, please.
Oh, excuse me. Point of order, first of all, Mr. Official Administrator, we have a motion that we would like you to consider.
Reluctantly, I will do that, Mr. Vincent. I don't like to be recognized. I prefer to do my work without being recognized. I have close to forty-eight years of municipal experience. I'm not far behind, Pat. I guess it's getting close to forty-nine. Forty-nine years now, and what I witnessed in this building was appalling, and it has come to an end. And this community will now move forward. I can tell you, prior to December fourth, council did not see an agenda package till the morning of the meeting. They were never, ever provided with the in-camera material, ever. Council sat here and wordsmithed motions to bring forward to the table. That is not their job. And Mr. Vincent and his team have brought this municipal administration to municipal gold standard, and I can compliment everyone for that, Pat. You people have done an unbelievable job. I'll move that the official administrator accept acknowledgement from the community and city administration for his efforts in serving the best interests of the City of Chestamere and its residents during the time he has served in this capacity. So moved, all in favor? Carrie.
And, Mr. Official Administrator, if I might invite everyone here, there is coffee and cake in the foyer if you would stay and visit with Mr. Legore, reminisce, and enjoy the hospitality of the city this morning. We would be deeply appreciative of that. With that, sir, you may adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. And July third will be my last council meeting up here at the front when I turn it over to Mayor Leck Dean and his team, and I will move back over to that corner where Charity was. I will be here overseeing things until the end of July. I'll move that the official administrator adjourn the meeting at nine fifty-four A M. So moved, all in favor? Carrie. Thank you, everyone.